Good morning, Vice President Lizer here, Comanche Nishlet, 1200, boss is team, Otto Comanche, Dusseche, Clascht, Duschenelli. It's good to be with you here this morning on this October 13th version of, I believe it's the 55th COVID-19 Town Hall update that we've been putting on here on Facebook. So, welcome this morning, everybody. I know this is a great time to receive timely updates and urgent information that's out there as we fight this COVID-19 pandemic. And so, as you know, since March, early on in March, then we've been forced to maintain vigilance and to enact emergency health orders and then get out timely information for those of you who truly need it. And so, this social media platform has been a go-to for thousands initially, and then, of course, through time, I believe everybody kind of got their own careers and lives started and find themselves busy during the morning. But, you know, this in keeping Tuesday morning, most often, we regularly put these on 10:00 AM, and then also on Thursday in the evening, has kind of been the trend as of late. And so, without further ado, let's open up with prayer, as we always do, and then we'll pass it on to our President Jonathan Nez. So, if you would indulge me, yeah, Shidi and God, we thank you for another day of life. We pray for your presence to be with us, Lord, and your love, mercy, and grace, Lord, to be extended to all of those, Lord, who need it, who are looking and need that security and peace of mind and hope, Father, that only you can provide. We thank you that we can ask for your great wisdom, Lord, in which to handle all this data, to decipher the information, Lord, that's given to us, and to make decisions, Lord, that benefit the people. So, we pray, Father, that you would show yourself mightily in this, Father, as you already have, Lord, those that are looking for you. Your word says that you search to and fro throughout the world, Lord, looking for those who will worship you in truth and in spirit, Father. And so, as we seek you, Lord, while you may be found, I pray, Lord, that you answer, that you show yourself mightily to those, Lord, Father, who are seeking. We thank you for this time. Now be with us, Father, in unity and peace and love, Father, as we look forward to this next version of this COVID-19 Town Hall update. Lord, we appreciate your blessings that you give us, Lord. We're thankful, and, Lord, we also ask that you extend your graceful hand, your merciful hand, Lord, Father, to the people of the land, as we are the host people. Yeah, Shidi and God, we give you thanks, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Amen. So, without further ado, as we always get started, our President Jonathan Nez, who's been leading by force and leading with great leadership qualities and capabilities, we look forward to his updates here. So, Mr. President, you are ready to go. So, ladies and gentlemen, Jonathan Nez, the President of Navajo Nation.
Thank you, Vice President, and appreciate everybody tuning into the Facebook Live, our Town Hall meeting. I do have staff in the room, those that are filming, and others that are on standby. That's the reason why I am wearing a mask in here, just for those that might want to comment later on about it. Every precaution is being taken here at the office. I know these are some uncertain times here, especially for Navajo Nation employees. So, we are doing our very best to, you know, keep everybody safe, and that's what's happening in our Navajo Nation offices throughout the Navajo Nation government. So, Town Hall, Tuesdays at 10:00 AM, Thursdays at 6:00 PM, and we give you an update on what we are working on as a nation, and also to let everybody know where our concerns are for possible outbreaks on the Navajo Nation. So, I'm gonna do some slides here, and I'll quickly go through them, and I'll talk to you all in Navajo as well. And so, if I can ask for your patience, I'll do it in English first. I need to switch out the... So, we gotta switch out the... Okay, hopefully, the sound is better. How's the sound, Eli? Good? All right. So, if you go put up the slide, first slide, we have tested 112,648 people. That's over 50% of our total population. Now, as you noticed in the asterisks there, people are getting tested more than once, twice even, and so, we're trying to track those here on the Navajo Nation. I don't know how they're tracked off the nation, but here on the Navajo Nation, we're doing our best to track. And we ask people to be upfront. If they're gonna get their second, third test, fourth test, please let the healthcare providers know that are taking the tests, so we can track this. So, negative tests, 96,727, and the positive tests, 10,728. So, if you look to the right, the right column there, those are cases within 24 hours. So, keep in mind, this was yesterday's report at 5:00, around about 5:00 is when we get these updates. So, 30 new positive cases within 24 hours. So, that's from Sunday to Monday, 5:00 PM yesterday. Next slide shows you the outbreak, the cases here on the Navajo Nation. These are actual residents on the Navajo Nation. Doesn't count border towns, but are residents here on Navajo. And you can see it fluctuate from March 17th all the way to yesterday, and you can see how we got hit pretty hard in mid-May, early May into early June, and we started to see a downward trend. But I want you to see the last several days there, where there has been an increase in cases here on the Navajo Nation. And our contact tracers and our Navajo Nation epidemiology team, which includes the Indian Health Services, the Navajo Department of Health, the state, the counties, and many others gathering the information. Our team has indicated that we are letting down at home. We're not wearing our masks, and we are still gathering together. Social gatherings, religious gatherings, and family gatherings. That means birthday parties. You know, when you're at home, you may be wearing your masks, right? But if you do have a family gathering that offers or provides food at this function, you know, obviously, you're gonna have to take your mask off to eat. And so, if everybody's eating at the same time, you can see how easy it could be to contract the virus at these social gatherings, family gatherings. And that's why we are getting that information over to our leadership, to let them know that these gatherings are the reason why these outbreaks are happening. We had an outbreak in the Sage Memorial Hospital Service Unit a couple of weeks ago. And then, we had the satellite chapters in the Eastern Agency, and now, we're seeing others starting to increase around the Navajo Nation. And contact tracers again have said it's because of family gatherings. So, we're gonna be getting information out to our citizens to let them know to prepare and to watch out for these types of gatherings. You know, the other thing that our contact tracers had just recently reported to us is also the... Our relatives were letting down. So, those that are living off the Navajo Nation, Navajo relatives are coming back to the Navajo Nation, and that's pretty much where the spread is happening too. A family member from off the Navajo Nation coming in, going to a social gathering, a family gathering, and they may not know they have the virus, and that's where it spreads. And so, we ask that, you know, we keep these CDC and NIH recommendations in the forefront of everything we're doing here on the Navajo Nation. Wearing masks, social, you know, this is repetitive. Wearing mask, social distancing, washing your hands with soap and water, and staying home as much as you can. And then, what we're also hearing is that people that travel further off the nation, not the border towns, but further out, are also catching the virus and bringing it back to Navajo. And again, we do go back to these social gatherings, and that's where it just takes off. So, we need to be aware of our surroundings. I'll come back to this, but in Utah, in New Mexico, they broke records in 24-hour cases of COVID, and it's really a high amount of COVID-19 cases all around our nation. So, if you go down, if you go to the next slide, it shows the progression from the beginning of the public health emergency to today. And as you go through the months where there are holidays, especially three-day holidays, you can see Memorial Day. And it takes a few days, several days, to get the numbers from that weekend. So, if you see Memorial Day happening, it seems like we're going down, but then Memorial Day, when we see the numbers coming in from that weekend alone, where the arrow is, you can see that there was a slight uptick. The July 4th was next, and there was a slight increase, but we managed to isolate and quarantine these individuals who caught COVID-19. And that's because of the epidemiology team and the contact tracers. You know, there have been reports too that people, some people are not as forthcoming on information when it deals to COVID-19. And if you're not forthcoming, the contact tracers can't do their work. I know people don't want to be embarrassed that they caught the virus, or they feel ashamed, or if there's some sense of denial, saying, "I don't have it." And but you tested positive. We need to know who you were associated with, so we can control the spread. That's gonna be the future here on the Navajo Nation, well, clear across the country without no vaccine, right? And as you go into Labor Day, I think Labor Day, we really, really let down here on the Navajo Nation, because you see that Labor Day uptick. And our relatives came home, people were associating with family members all around the Navajo Nation, and not knowing that they had COVID-19, spread it. But we are at a plateau now, and we're prayerful and hopeful that it's flattening out, and we are going on a downward trend in the future. Next slide, and you can see compared to the states all around us, and we need to do a better, so, better graph, so you can see it. I know that this is kind of small lettering, but this is what we use to see what's happening all around us. That yellow bar is the Navajo Nation, the yellow bar. Eli? And it shows the states there. North Dakota, in the last seven days, has been the highest in the country. And guess who the fifth one is? That's that red line, Utah. And then, the next one is yellow compared to all those other states, and then, New Mexico, Colorado, and Arizona. There has been a significant increase for over half of the states in the United States of America of COVID-19 cases. The... Go ahead and go to the slide that you just showed, Eli, neighboring jurisdictions there. And right in the middle there of the four corners is the Navajo Nation. And because of the outstanding work of our epidemiology team and our public health professionals, IHS 638 facilities, police, everybody on the front lines, getting the message out, quarantine and isolating outbreaks, we managed to keep ourselves in that yellow category, that caution warranted category. But as you can see, the United States map, all around the nation trending poorly, uncontrolled spread in Utah. And if you look at the chart on the right-hand side there, it shows you Arizona, Colorado, New Mexico, even New Mexico having mask mandate. You saw it rise in cases, and in Utah, pretty, pretty extreme. I think they're getting control of those outbreaks, and then, Navajo Nation in yellow. I wanted to also share, this was a graph that was shared to me, these are information that I received from the Health Command Operations Center and many partners for EPI and contact tracers. This next slide, I wanted to share that Dr. Jill Jim provided, shows you on a daily basis, because we all get the reports every day, right? We say 21, 17, and we think, we feel like those are low numbers, but keep in mind, everything that we report is within 24-hour increments. So, if you add them up, let's say, seven days, 14 days, it is beginning to be significant. So, if you look at the chart there, and it compares Arizona, New Mexico, and Colorado, and Utah, these are the states all around us. On September 28th, within 24 hours, we had 21 new cases. And look at Arizona, New Mexico, Colorado, and Utah. Now, the next day, September 29th, 24. So, if you go down that column on the Navajo Nation, within 24 hours of those days, you got 21, 24, 15, 46, 32, 30, 17, 17, 27, 32, 42, 43, 20, and 30. And that was yesterday's number, 30. So, because of that, ladies and gentlemen, we are gonna continue the curfews. The curfews are gonna continue, and they're gonna be now from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, each weekday, 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, gives another extra hour. Please don't run off to the border towns, because you got an extra hour, especially those that live in Winderock. Go to your local BASH's, local supermarkets, please. Wear your masks. You know what I heard too as well, a report, is that on the Navajo Nation, the businesses are doing an excellent job mandating masks to be worn in their facility, facilities, also providing hand-washing stations and hand sanitizers. But as you go off the Navajo Nation, some businesses are a little lenient, and the further you go, it's not as extreme as we are. And when I say extreme, it's in a good way. So, using our businesses here, you know that they are following the protocols that are put in place, and it's safer. And so, for the weekend, for the rest of the month of October, it's gonna be 56-hour curfew, Friday, 9:00 PM to Monday at 5:00 AM. And for the super majority of our Navajo citizens that have been abiding by these curfews, thank you so much. You are protecting yourself, you're protecting our most vulnerable population, our elders, our disabled citizens. our disabled citizens, our children. And we appreciate that. Now, others, you know, uh, we also need to begin to do better at, uh, following these protocols. And I, I, I ask for the Navajo citizens out there to, you know, talk to your family members. Talk to your relatives and your friends, don't just call the cops. The, the police officers are stretched thin with a lot of issues that are happening here on Navajo. And I think now's the time we take it upon ourselves to hold each other's accountable. And I appreciate those have done that, that have done that. So 56 hour weekend lockdown begins Friday, October 16, 9:00 PM and ends Monday, October 19 at 5:00 AM. And it's gonna be going for the next three, uh, weekends. And we did get reports and there's a lot of states and a lot of cities throughout the country that are not supporting, uh, Halloween because of the exchange of items. Because you don't know, you know, where these items have been. And it's, candy are being exchanged. But a Halloween does, uh, fall on Saturday. So that would fall into the lockdown. And before you, uh, you buy candy or get prepared for Halloween, there's gonna be a, a lockdown during that time. So just, you know, there, there are other activities at home that you can do with the children. And there'll be, uh, online events. We want to put an online event as well on Saturday for Halloween for the children. So listen out for that on our Facebook page. Last time we had, um, Mark Hamel, the director for Star Wars, uh, on our show with the Mark Ruffalo and many others. And we could do, uh, something similar. That's when they streamed Star Wars in Navajo. All right, so let's prepare. Let's prepare for, uh, the winter. As you know, essential activities are farming. You know, everybody's getting their produce prepared for the winter. That's allowable. Some of you have farm permits. Show those if you are traveling from your house to your farm. Livestock, if you're traveling from your home to a ranch, you should have a grazing permit. You show that to the authorities. Wood hauling is allowable. So if you have a wood hauling permit, you show that to the authorities. And peonyon picking is not essential. Again, that's, you know, you're using your hands and you're, um, passing it from one person to the another. And so we don't want any type of spread to happen, to occur because of that. So those are essentials. And of course, if you want to exercise, you can go from your home uh, out and then come back, either biking, horseback riding, running, walking, things like that. That's allowable. As long as you continue to wear your mask and social distance and all those protocols. And the last thing I, I want to mention, um, is the, well, let me, let me go back to, to this real quick and just, I'm gonna try to highlight this as quick as I can. Uh, in Navajo. Uh, kodo, bilagana, kachibaho, shnagi, shikero, shunaro, aren't. Tanihe nathagi, yate, di, Jonathan, nez, anihi lne. Uh, di, shi chito, shizebkistki, egi bininagi, ei kon. Uh, nachalchin, nachandalne, shigi kon, dahazt, ha, e bininae, a. Uh, di maskit, egi, chodeile, uh, hota, la, hendeitleha. Ako, di nahlnegi, dukhosintschagi, banda huiilne, na ki jenda, neshana, di jenda, neshana. Uh, di je, nezna, bin, olkilo, egot, a, hane, nihi, gondaili. Ado, ndas khad, nebi kei, apakao, kon kei, huit, innigia, de nebi kei, apakao. Alla, nezna, di doba, a, na kitza, da, demeliaja. Do, hastha, nezna, di doba, a, diz, di doba, a, tsebi, nelta, ei kon. Nihi kei, nihi, denen, das khala, shi, ea, kon tes, a, da, nihi, doilia. Jodi, hotshinho, ndatsago, ot, a, shi, ea, a, tes, daal, ea. Ado, di tes, dabediliagi, o, di dukhosintschagi, ei, ndolna, dabedon, nidi gi, ea, nezna, demeliaja. Do ba, a, tsebi, nezna, di doba, a, na, di, hastha. Nelta, ei kon, uh, nihi kei, nihi, ne, uh, bedatolna. Ado, icha, das khage. Um, if I can get the recovery number from yesterday's, um. Ado, di bedatolnagi, ea, kon banda huiilne. Ado, la, ndahtle, nihi kei, nihi, ne, bell, ta di, no. La, shi, a, ninle, hagande, nda, uh, nihi kei, nihi, ne, bell, la, ndahtle, ea. Ado, di ro, chodall, eh, nihi zedo, nihi chimp, ek, edastke. Nsion, o, hota, la, akonde, a, hagande, da, ita, go, ea, da, da, go. Je, ea, ei, a, ta, di, napali gi, ei, na, chikundeil, eh, chukhot, a, ei, da, ita, ea. Da, ita, da, go, a, ltsko, kei, bell, go. Di meh, chodan, chodo, chodall, o, go, e, shi, binina, oy, nahlne, nihi, oy, de, kotsa. Hagan haz, ad, binina, la, hendeitleha, hota, dukhosintschagi, de, desk, shik, e, ro, shunna. Ei, binina, da, di, ne, a, a, ro, hota, ea, ea, nihi kei, ninle, ha, da, shi, ndak, khage, bell, la, ndahtle, da. A, hagan haz, ad, nihi kei, bell, go, e, shi, a, 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 at, eh, nd, di, chodall, eh. Ado, kdrindeyl, khagi, da, nihi, lni, ea. Nihi kei, nihi, denen, le, klo, tabilagana, bi kei, ya, ta, ke, da, hat, innigi. Nachan, da, khao, la, shi, do, bell, beda, hazenda. Di dukhosintschagi, beda, halon. Nihi kei, nihi, ne, nachan, at, sa, go. Nihi, da, dolna, ho, ta, shik, e, ro, shunna. Ei, binina, ei, kodo, nachalchin, bich, ya, dalte. Di zeba haz, ligo, shi, nda, hada, ino, lne, dabedon, no. A, hota, shi, do, uh, nihan, bich, gondall, eh, nson, do, le, shik, e, ro, shunna. So, da, adah, la, oy, de, nda, desk, it. De nebi kei, apakao, klo, tabilagana, ke, hat, inja, sole, ha, hotsoja, kodi, yo, tho, ha, hotsoja. Ei, do, do, da, go, dena, desk, it. Nihi, a, shon, de, desk, nde, o, a, shon, a, ya, ya, hota. So, ei, binina, ei, kodo, da, dahla, ya, a, shon, eh, nihi, na, neshan, dal, innigi, do, a, koda, eh, do, la, shi, ea, ba, ch, eh, de, khai, nde. Hada, ino, lne, ndeshni. Naso, di meh, chodall, eh, do, a, ro, ya, dego, ya, dalte. Nihi, la, do, tchala, washbe, tchala, da, gesan, ningi. Je, ei, kodo, bilagana, uh, kachibae, hasti, do, hane, gi, do, nihi, gwo, isla. Di sole, ha, hotsoja, do, o, di, isla, din, ha, hotsoja, ea. Astan, le, hotat. Isla, kon, eh, hota, ea, de, desk, it, do, nal, kit. De, na, isla, din, ha, hotso, uh, ts, e, shi, do, o, o, on, hi, pe, hazendo, le, shik, e, ro, shunna. Ado, banda huiilne, a, khui, je, na, din, alla, tchad, din, diz, din. Isla, tsata, hastha, tsata, da, da, no, banda huiilne, a, khui, je. A, khui, je, ei, alla, je. Bedatolnagi, ei, banda huiilne. Ako, le, tsos, tsid, je, ez, ligo, a, ltsko. A, ltsko, lhi, eh, go, ltsko, uh, na, uh, di, di, nal, kirigi, obeh, hazendo, ea, ea, al, le, alla, nezna, di, doba, la, hane, tel, ei, kon, nihi kei, nihi, ne, bedatolna. Ei, binina, ea, kon, hane, nihi, gondaili, radio, biye. Di, do, hane, egi, do, biye, shik, e, ro, shunna. Ado, ei, binina, ea, uh, lockdown, curfew, ha, nini, ea, don, da, je, ta, do, le, a, uh, in, a, nahast, e, olkilo. Nahast, e, olkilo, don, le, isla, olkilo, je. Ei, khot, a, ea, do, da, je, ta, do, le, don, al, ya, ba, hagan, do, a, da, at, eh, ta, do, le. Ado, nda, inisho, nahast, e, olkilo, in, a. Don, le, domo, yaja, domo, do, domo, bis, kanagon, isla, olkilo, bin, go. Ei, khot, a, ei, khot, akon, eh, do, da, je, ta, do, le. Na, ya, ba, hagan, uh, ta, da, del, khao, do, le. Aro, ch, ah, na, ik, khai, a, shon, shik, ino, lini. Bininagi, je, de, desk, it, do, bininag, o, do. Ado, na, ya, ba, hagan, a, kon, de, nebi kei, apakao, chodall, eh, a, shon, eh. A, shon, eh. A, kon, da, olni, de, nebi kei, apakao. You know, um, I want to also, uh, do the breakdown, if you can do the breakdown of the CARES Act expenditure, just to let everybody know where we're at. As, as you know, as you may know, the entire 714 million, 100, I'm sorry, 654, uh, thousand, 631 dollars and 47 cents has been expended. So if you look at the PowerPoint now, the first allocation of CARES, Navajo Nation CARES Fund was in May 6th in the amount of 600 million, 559,530 dollars and 10 cents. The second allocation came in June 16th. 86 million, 358,877 dollars and 4 cents. Third allocation, June 18th. 27 million, 271,224 dollars and 33 cents. So that gets you that 714, uh, million uh, dollar figure. And see, this, this was just developed, uh, today. We are gonna verify the resolutions. The resolutions that were approved were CJN 47, 20, 21 million dollars plus. CJN 46, 20, 41 million dollars. CJ, uh, and, and these were done both on July 4th, 20, signed into law. CJY 6720 was, uh, August 16th. An amount of 475 million plus. And there's interest income as of October 5th at 465,000. Resolution CS 7320, which was just signed into law on Friday, 10, 9, 127 million plus. And then CS 7420, 49 million plus. If you go to the next slide, CJN 4620 allocated 21 million dollars for special duty pay. That's hazard pay for those that were working from the start of the public health emergency when the administrative leave to the end of administrative leave. Personal protection equipment, 10 million dollars. Building improvement, that's the safety assurance facility, 10 million. And that's 41 million. Go ahead and go to the next slide, CJY 6720. That's the, the infrastructure initiatives, the project. And that's a water project in the amount of 130 million plus dollars. And those are being, um, done now. Power line projects, 44 million. Uh, we did, if you haven't got an update, go to our Facebook page, we got updates on that. Uh, and it's currently being done. Telecommunication and broadband, 53 million. 200, that's, I'm looking at the, where it says final appropriation on the right, the far right-hand side, 53 million. And yesterday, we, uh, did a dedication for the Pinedale, New Mexico, Pinedale Chapter, um, tower, cell tower with, uh, Intuay Choice Wireless. We're also looking at Wood Springs, uh, Betla, Petro, and Summit East here. Uh, up on top of, uh, the hill there in St. Michael's. So those are underway. And then you got, uh, then we have solar projects, 35 million. Hardship assistance, 1,000. That, that's gonna have more in it and I'll come back to that. Uh, Parks and Recreation, 828,000 plus. For those that are struggling and, and improvements that need to be developed because of the closure of all the Navajo Nation parks. 42 million for payroll support that goes to the controller. Uh, and the controller will determine how to, uh, use those dollars to supplement, um, some of the salaries that were uh, paid out for during the public health emergency. Business assistance, 20, 24.6 million, business assistance. And JT will give us an update on that shortly. He's on the panel today. Judicial Branch, 9.6 plus million. Oh, I'm sorry, the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise Business Assistance. That was for the closure of the casinos. I know there was a lot of people wanting to keep that uh, facilities closed and keep the spread from our elders. The DED Business Assistance is what I was talking about, JT, 60 million dollars. He'll give you an update on that. Navajo Department of Health, 75 million dollars plus. So that's total of 47, 5, 475 million dollars. CS 7320, next slide. That's what we signed, uh, last Friday. Uh, 90 million going to the chapters. That money stays up here, uh, and the chapters will be submitting, um, on how they want to develop that appropriation or that relief for our citizens. Uh, and we are currently, uh, the controller and the team are work, working on the protocol for that with Division of Community Development. 2 million for DCD to administer the 90 million. Uh, telecom for broadband, 15 million. Um, again, we need more broadband access, uh, telecommunication capability. And 20 plus million for the Office of the Controller CARES Fund Implementation. CS 7420, the next slide. And that's the hardship assistance for 49.4 plus million. And I know that there has been a lot of, uh, inquiries on that. The resolution that we signed indicates that the application uh, will be, uh, supported and forwarded by a vote from the Health Education and Human Services Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee. And with all these allocations, the Office of the Controller will be administering, uh, these funds because it is a Department of Treasury, uh, oversight, the US Department of Treasury Oversight. Uh, and it's subject to audit and it's also should be, and it's, and it's specifically, uh, for the pandemic, this, uh, COVID-19 emergency. So those are things that the council is dealing with and the controller will be updating us shortly on. And so if you go back, if you go to the last slide or back to the first slide that I showed you on the breakdown, it shows you there a rundown of, of the CARES Act, the seven hundred and fourteen million. So one thing that we didn't factor is the interest that came in. So that's what you see there, four hundred and sixty-five thousand remaining. And that will most likely go into the hardship assistance fund. And what was remaining was six hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. But right now, as I show you, that's the entire CARES Fund that was allocated to the Navajo Nation. I know that's a lot. We are keeping tabs on all these line items, projects are being done. I know that for the hardship assistance, they're saying that if some of these projects don't get completed, some of those monies will go into the hardship, you know. There might be a false impression that there's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars going into the hardship assistance. But as we saw yesterday with Pinedale, cell towers, the water line, electricity, telecommunication and broadband projects are being completed as we speak. And some of these companies are using their own money to get these, like Intuay, using their own money to get these projects done before the deadline. But now that there's money that goes to the Office of the Controller, we're hopeful that the process will be a lot quicker. And it'll show that monies are being spent once these get appropriated to Intuay to do these projects or other organizations, NECA, and even the chapters. So right now, just to give you an update, the, the application process is still pending, right? I don't know how long that's gonna take, that's council action. We do have recommendations for them. And keep in mind that hardship assistance, that's what it was called in the first place, in first place. It's not a per capita payment, it's hardship assistance. And those of you that are saying, oh, the same old people are gonna get help. If you have a hardship, apply. Don't just give up. I know there's a lot of people out there that are struggling. That's what it's, that's what it was meant for, is for those that are struggling, relief. Of course, you're gonna have to, because these are dollars that are restricted and that need to be held accountable. You will have to sign a document that's saying that these monies are intended for relief from, you know, what happened with the public health emergency. Paying the bills, ideally lost a job, things like that. And just keep in mind, those of us that have internet access will be able to get onto the portal. One thing that we need to also remind ourselves is our grandmas and grandpas out there that live in the rural areas that don't have internet access, that don't know how to do applications or read or write English. And that's where our staff will go out there and try to assist as best as we can because we can't have large gatherings still, right? But to have those elders and disabled people that have been hit hard, or people that have been hit hard because of this pandemic, to make sure that they get some relief and get them prepared for the winter. And some of us are able-bodied people, you know, and just keep that in mind. We are able to help those citizens. So forty-nine million right now is what's allocated. If all these projects get done that were allocated, that's just only forty-nine million that's gonna be available. So I don't know if there are people out there that got your hopes up, but we're just telling you that some of these projects will get completed. And if they do get reverted, it's not gonna be million, hundreds of millions of dollars, I'm sure. Because now we gave some monies to the Office of the Controller to help administer and to get these projects complete. So I just wanted to let you all know, don't lose hope. I know that there are people out there that are saying, the same old people are gonna get assistance. I mean, for me, there are people that are struggling. Even all the way to Hawaii, I got an email from Hawaii. They are Navajo citizens. If they can show their hardship, they should be able to apply, right? But there are gonna be most likely limited amount of dollars. It's not gonna probably fund all three hundred and fifty thousand Navajos that are, three hundred and twenty thousand, I think it was the last count, that was signed up on the census indicating that they're Navajo. So I'll stop there, you know, I'm taking too much time. Those of you that, that are saying, saying in Navajo, please provide that information to your elders. And help us, help the nation by supporting the decisions that are made. And, you know, we want to have a lasting impression on the Navajo Nation. Because many of you that are living off the nation, I eventually see you coming home one day. So if we prepare water, electricity, telecommunication, broadband now, when you return, you'll have those resources. If not, then many of you may say, still the same old, same old. Here's an opportunity to develop community and economic development with these monies at the same time, really pushing back on this COVID nineteen that has come into our homes. So God bless you, thank you so much for the opportunity to give you an update. I know that was a lot of information, but go to our Facebook pages and get some updates. And, you know, be positive out there with your comments as well. I mean, it's just all about negativity, more so now than ever, I think. It sounds like we're bringing in all that negativity that's happening all around the Navajo Nation. Now it's coming on to the Navajo Nation.
Ey bidiyot otat, bidiyot ayadahlte. Nixee edeneni dle. El ka neyte ho, el kelsindeilnesho, ndesni, di naasni hikibiche di ikha. Do eyo elkijeyilti. Ey belaganah, aja naantchen do, aja beo ol islet. Nixee ashon, adana jebkakishljeji, deneni dline. Aw allan ajind, nchahow. Nixena nixedeliyagi.
You know, yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we were recognized, the Indigenous Peoples were recognized for the contributions to this country, the world. And I can give you a long list of contributions, and you know, Code Talkers, all the way to our language, our culture, and being stewards of the land. Now is the time for us to be united and not divided, not divide ourselves because of what's happening all around us in cities out there, what you hear off there, that shouldn't come in. If we are all saying that our culture, our tradition, and our language is going downhill, we better teach that to our younger generation. And one of those fundamental teachings is to respect one another and to respect people in positions of authority. Because I remember when they would say bahasthi yaya, meaning that it's, you shouldn't be negative or you shouldn't be talking about people in positions of leadership. And that's our doctors, that's our executive directors, that's just not elected leaders. Let's unite. And let's be careful of what we put into this internet as well. Because you are a model for the younger generation. Kids do watch and read some of these comments. And I bet many are saying, wow, that's our Navajo people? So as the president, you know, I have, I think the people gave me some leeway to step on some toes out there to say that we need to return to being respectful to one another and to hold each other accountable. So thank you so much, God bless you, God bless our Navajo Nation. I'm turning the time over to our Vice President Myron Lizer. Thank you so much, thank you for watching, Thursday at six PM, next Town Hall.
President, great update, as always, great information. And our prayer that people across the land would use this information and be able to make better decisions out there during this time of COVID and this pandemic. So really, I appreciate your words, sir, always great leadership and good chastising sometimes, we all need it. It's good, and it's our prayer that the people across the land would heed those words. And no chastisement ever feels good in the present time, but it's designed to bring about correction, action, better motivation, better encouragement for future, for future times. But it's all designed to, to create the change that's needed. And so, and President and I, we've always said, you know, let's, you know, let's work together, let's bring solutions. So I guess President is talking to those that don't bring solutions. So, you know, to those we do encourage, we accept all comments, good and bad, but, you know, obviously focus and give time to the ones that provide solutions and not the negativity. So anyway, just saying that, because it is out there, it is real. But, you know, we are working feverishly, very hard, Mr. President. I'm sure he's lost a lot of sleep leading this nation. And so to hear things and to see things out there, he's got, that he feels he needs to speak at, you know. Please hear, hear him, he's our leader, he's our president. So we appreciate his comments, his words, and his wisdom. So thank you, Mr. President. Real quick update from Office of the Vice President here. On October seventh last week, we had the opportunity to stop by the Fort Defiance Chapter House where Water Missions, a nonprofit, under the auspices of Samaritan Spurcey, who was recently here on Navajo, saw fit to bring their expertise, their prowess, water. They brought water hand washing stations to select chapters, and in this case, it was thirty-seven. That was their goal, to bring thirty-seven hand washing stations. Now, these are very, very, put together very well, they're stainless steel. And I encourage you, in fact, last week, we got to go to Fort Defiance Chapter where we took in, I washed my hands, and my phalanges were very clean. And it's great, you know, and these are at the hand watering stations, our hand station, our, these are at the water distribution points at the chapter house where people come to fill up their water bottles and their jugs and whatnot for drinking water. And so as you know, as people come, especially during this pandemic, they have to touch a surface. And, you know, that's a common surface area handles. And so they provided this hand washing station right there, soap, everything. And, you know, all I gotta do is just wash your hands and right after you fill up your jugs with water. So what a great idea. And they implemented thirty-seven here in select chapters on the Navajo Nation. And this was all started facilitated by the Vice President's office where we got them in touch with the water people, IHS, and how they took it and were diligent and developed MOUs, separate MOUs with all of these chapters. And there they were able to meet their goal last week. In fact, that day we went out, I believe it was on Thursday, they implemented their thirty-seventh hand washing station. So those of the chapters out there, you definitely were blessed in maybe future collaboration for some additional hand washing stations to be implemented. So we'll give you updates as we receive them as well. Last week also, on October eighth, we were able to provide words of encouragement. I think I mentioned this the last Town Hall. I just wasn't able to give a total backdrop on it and why we went out there. But we were able to provide words of encouragement and tour the Pesco, which is the Process Equipment and Services Company there in Farmington, where they have many, many Denai workers, many of our workers are there. It was a great visit, you know, I provided words of encouragement and I myself was encouraged by them there. There are over two hundred of our Navajo welders there. And in their heyday, I believe they employ well over three hundred welders, you know, good, high-paying jobs at the Pesco plant there. And they're growing, especially in this time where, you know, things are reeling back and gas and oil right now are, it's not the best industry right now, but they're diversified. And so what a, what a great thing to be doing right now in this present economy. But they saw fit to develop and look at partnering with our own Navajo Technical University and New Mexico Tech. Recently, those two universities or institutions signed an MOU and they're gonna work with New Mexico Tech's patented technology, a filament fiber to process water, to filter water, and drinking water at that, not just potable water. But Pesco, once these plans are finalized and approved, they'll send them to Pesco and they'll manufacture these filters, filtration systems, skids as they call them, probably, like a shed, about the size of a shed. And they'll put it out there and in a selected chapter and test, after the assessment's done, whatever water needs to be cleaned out, whether it be arsenic or sulfur, phosphorus, whatever is, you know, the problem, it could be, you know, highly, you know, acidic or, you know, maybe a brackish water, and then they can filter this water out. They'll design especially for that region in the water after the assessment. But what a great idea, and our own Intuay is a part of this collaboration. So all designed under the auspices in this present time that water is one of the, the basic necessities, right? I mean, that's what we've been talking about, President mentioned water several, several times. And especially with CARES Act funding, we can, you know, look at, at bringing more water to the nation. And so we're looking forward to this collaboration and what it will, will be. But, you know, it's just, the capacity, I was told, was a hundred thousand gallons a day. And so brought to whatever chapter. It was also thought too that this could be the beginnings of the much valued, the much talked about over the years, Navajo Nation Water Bottling Facility. And so we are having those discussions there in the region, look to be, maybe implementing the Navajo Dam escrow account funds that are there, still needing to ascertain the amount. So we'll be having meetings, I'm hopefully, hoping next week, if not next week, then the week after that. But I'm simply mentioning these to, to provide encouragement for those out there that would, you know, say that nothing's happening and, you know, or that there's plans. I mean, we're, we're part of meetings day in, day out, and we're looking at these opportunities. And so there's many out there, many great opportunities, especially in this pandemic, a lot of opportunity. And so aside from what you see and read in the newspapers, you know, there's a lot of movement. There's a lot of, just like Pesco, I mean, their bread and butter was oil and gas, but now in this present market, it's just not, not there. And so they diversified and now are designing water filtration systems. These are large, you know, large, a hundred thousand gallons a day. So, and then collaborate with the nation. So we look forward to that, work with them. We're also in that region, looking to bring the railroad to fruition. Many administrations have been talking about railroad from Farmington, Nappy area down to the I-40 corridor. And so recently, President and I, along with San Juan County, signed an MOU. And that MOU provided some fruit, already bearing fruit. The, the, this project garnered two million dollar bill grant monies from the United States Department of Transportation. So we're studying that and hopefully down the 491 corridor, down to Gallup. And I tell you, a lot of opportunity there, bringing manufacturing, bringing new industries to the region and jobs, right? We're talking jobs, thousands of jobs. Reason why I really focus on Pesco here is they have a high number of our Navajo workers there. Well-skilled, high-paid, a very, very successful company there employing our Navajo workers. So I took the time to provide some encouragement and it was great to learn about their company, see what their vision is for the future. And they see a future working with Navajo. Who's to say we couldn't develop some type of plant here on Navajo, bring in jobs to the Navajo Nation and bring in our professionals and our skilled workers home. Which President, as you remember here, just shortly, few minutes ago, saying that we look to bring those workers home, bring our people home. And we're working day in, day out, if not hour by hour with that goal. That's what we're about, that's what this. That's what we're about. That's what this Meslizer administration has been saying all this time. And as pandemic kind of gotten away, but even in a pandemic, right? It's a crisis, but another definition of crisis is opportunity. We have many opportunities. And so, we're vetting those and looking at them. I think you've heard me mention that we have our Economic Recovery Work Group that's been meeting regularly for the last month. I tell you, we've been making a lot of inroads here, looking and vetting at projects, vetting projects that we could conceivably bring to the nation, bring around the nation and help bring our people home. That's our goal. Those of you out there in Los Angeles, you know, and all the areas, metropolitan areas around the nation, in the Southwest, in the West. Meslizer is working extremely hard to bring you all home, bring your families home, creating the capacity. As you know, the proverbial rocket, right, expends 80% of its energy taken off from the Earth's atmosphere. But once it breaks the Earth's atmosphere, it uses minimal energy. It has reserved their, you know, last 10% in case it runs into an emergency. But this proverbial rocket is a good illustration on what this administration is doing here. And again, the pandemic gotten away, but I fully feel, fully feel that we're doing a lot of exposing those areas, those bottlenecks within the government and the bureaucracy. And we're working with our federal partners on eliminating that, streamlining that word. Everybody uses streamline. I feel like because of our enhanced relationships, that we have really got a bead on the problems and we're working on those problems. From the DOI to BIA to BIE to IHS and on down. I mean, this nation is becoming, I believe, more fit. And so, it takes a lot, it takes a lot of hurt and pain, right? Just when you first start working out, right, you start lifting weights, those muscles are sore. And some of us quit, right? It's just not for us. But some of us keep going and you see those ones that are admired later down the road, right? After two, three years of working out, bodies chiseled, you know, looking real good. The aesthetics are there. This is a good illustration of what I think change in the government is, is working hard and going through the laborious period where it doesn't feel good. And, you know, you want to fight every notion to continue to improve. But yet, when you stick to it, you stay principled, you stay diligent, and you are disciplined, you see in two, three years that what, you know, this kind of attention to detail will provide you. So, someday we'll be chiseled, we'll be built. It's a good illustration, but I think you get my point. And so, no, sometimes it doesn't feel good working out. That's why a lot of people don't work out. If it was easy, everybody'd be built and everybody would be, you know, in good shape. But it's not easy, those that really pay attention and being disciplined and principled. Though, and mind what they eat and get their rest. Those are the ones that are enjoying, you know, I guess, all the benefits of their hard work. And so, someday, shidneh, will enjoy the benefits of all this hard work, these trying times. It's kind of funny, reminds me of a saying, it's funny how these hard and trying times will one day be called the good old days. So, join us as we continue to work hard with our eye aimed towards those good old days in the real, real near future. So, I was touting that company there, but I want to get back to that point, Pesco Plant. You know, this company has sound business acumen. They've been in business for over 50 years. Jim and Kyle Rhodes, the new owners, they're the sons of Ed and Mary Lou, the founders of the company. But I'll bet when the parents left the company to their children, they understood everything about the business. They understood. And they worked probably cleaning and, you know, cleaning toilets, sweeping the floors, and they're working in every segment of their business, but they knew everything. And so, this company employs hundreds of Navajo workers and supplies them with good paying jobs. And as they sell their equipment around the world, I think they're in about 40, 30, 40 different countries. I can't remember the number, but they saw fit to diversify into manufacturing, other equipment, water. And so, this is where the nation joins in that endeavor. So, it's these workers and the many more like them that are here on the Navajo Nation or who want to be here on the Navajo Nation. They have a desire to move back with their families, especially during this pandemic when potentially they lost jobs. Potentially, they were in a realm, you know, of life where it wasn't comfortable. And certainly, working abroad is very difficult on families, even now in this pandemic, or especially now in this pandemic. And many of those are out of work right now. Right now, I'm thinking of a gentleman I met and a family that we're trying to help. He had got laid off his job in Denver, Colorado, good paying job. His family's, all his children are in private school here in Navajo Prep. And they work hard. They live at Tal Tree Mesa. And very nice family, working hard, doing all the right things. And yet, this pandemic is just, father recently lost a job in Denver, but because of their goals and commitment, saw fit to take a job in Ohio. And, you know, it could be a heartbreaking, gut-wrenching story. And it does, it's very touching. But these hardworking families and those over at Pesco, I support them. And we want to create this kind of opportunity here on Navajo. And, you know, we are prayerfully working hard and feverishly. And we, it's our desire that you would support this as well. And I believe that's what our President was talking about earlier. And so, we're here to provide an instrument of leadership outside of the box. And that's what many of you are responding to. And I get it, I get it. And I'm just, and President is prayerfully asking you to stop the negativity because the work that's needed is, is, no one's ever been in this position before. So, nobody can really readily criticize and critique, right? Otherwise, you'd be here. And so, nobody knows, just President and I. And for such a time as this year, we take our people in every circle, every arena that we're in, our people are there, all 350,000 of you all there behind us, backing us up, praying for us and whatnot. But it's during this pandemic that we need to band together. And certainly in this election time, you know, we need to band together. Sure, have differences, I get it, and that's good. But at the end of the day, we're all Navajo, we're all human beings much more. We all bleed red and so, designed to work collaboratively in God's perfect plan. When we're not working together, that's division and that's strife and that's disunity and that's Satan, that's the enemy. And so, please, shidneh, do everything you can to be in unity, be in harmony, hojoo, right? We need to be in hojoo, balance. And so, I appreciate you all for giving me that opportunity. But it's those hard workers and those that want to work, they're looking for jobs, good paying jobs, and they're willing to do what it takes to get ahead and then get these jobs. But it's those that I wish to address. And it's these many workers that I do not want to lose sight of. And I'll take any and all opportunities to be with them, to support them, and to provide a hope and a future for them and their families. And that's why I believe I'm here as the Vice President with a business background. We'll work feverishly. We'll leave no stone unturned. We'll look at every viable option and ability that we have as the leadership here to vet opportunities, to bring potential jobs to the nation and much more revenue, right? Whether it be retailing revenue that's brought to the nation because we're bringing our people home. We got to provide the infrastructure, we got to provide the opportunities for business and creating a business-friendly atmosphere, which is slowly turning. I can feel it, I can sense it. This coming from a business owner, the words, the narrative is starting to change. By Navajo, by local, it's starting to grip and take hold, right? Just like that proverbial rocket, right, trying to leave the Earth's atmosphere. It's going to expend a whole lot of energy. It's going to take a whole lot of words to get to that point. But once we do, I spoke of that critical mass, right, where we'll continue to grow in spite of what we do. When I say we, the collective we, we're all going to be on the same page, doing the same things, supporting one another, not tearing each other down. So, it's a great future. It's a great future. If you can have the eye to believe, let him who can believe that, believe that and run with it. But I just want you to know too, let's not lose sight of those people that are struggling. As President said, you know, this hardship that we're looking at bringing to the people. I don't want to get negative here, but not everybody is going to get what they feel they need. Not everybody. And it's those people that we need to really be thanking for. And working hard to bring change to their life as well. If they are not able to get the hardship, then we need to provide opportunities for them. So, please, shidneh, all across the land, work hard, continue to be vigilant, stay safe. And, you know, we'll all get through this together. But I want you to be praying for each household, right, in your prayers. Not only for ourselves, right? Me, myself, and no more, right? That's usually what we do. Our, in churches, we say, "Us four and no more," right? I mean, that's kind of what we pray for. But let's pray for the Navajo Nation. Some of you don't have the opportunities that President and I have to hear of the problems, to hear individual families reaching out to us, emails, messengers, texts, phone calls, messages to OPVP, trying to get their word message out to us. There are many struggling people out there. We keep these in mind as we work hard, as we stay up late nights conducting meetings and working. We want to bring change to every Dene citizen here on Navajo and all the future ones. Those of you of starting families, you want your kids to grow up in a prosperous land. Well, we're working for that. We feel change is coming. Otherwise, we, you know, it'd be hard to keep on doing the same thing over and over and over again, expecting a different result. You got to do something differently to shake loose the establishment. So, continue to pray. Stand with us as we work hard for you all, President. And I admire his leadership, you know. I wasn't the politician, I wasn't the government tribal worker. But for a season, I watched him, the way he conducted himself, the way he led. And then, you know, you mimic it, you copy it, and you become strong in your own right. You have your own personality and your own character and your own ways of doing things. And you take those lessons and you make them your own. I think I was doing the campaign, I called it "Fake it till you make it." But we do everything we do in our families here to provide encouragement, to bring hope to the people all across the land. I know many are hurting. We've lost many, 560 plus of our people. One is too many. But that's where we are. We can't look back. We go forward, we go forward. Expecting change to come, praying like it depends on us. Working like it depends on us, but praying like it depends on our Creator. So, thank you. I appreciate your time. Let's continue to look forward to the hope and the future and healing of our land. Let's look forward to be what it feels like to be prosperous and to be, you know, have everything we need, as President said, all the infrastructure that we need to bring businesses and to bring enhanced quality of life here on Navajo, because we're all about that. And let's help utilize all the resources that our Navajo Nation has. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you. Until the next time, Thursday, 6:00 PM, same time, same channel. Vice President Lizer, thank you for bearing with us. And I pray that we all who would get to the same point in the real near future improved and changed by this pandemic and by the prayers of our people. Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce Mr. Arvin Mitchell, who's the Director of our Census 2020 Outreach. Looking forward to your update, sir. Thank you. And take it away, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Vice President. Also, thank you, President Nas. 2020 Census, every Tuesday, I do a brief report on where we're at on our 2020 Census. Back in June 11th of this year, that's when we restarted our update leave. The questionnaire, from June 13th to August 11th. Questionnaire, so from that day on. So, from August 10th. Non-response follow-up. That's when we started the non-response follow-up. Another word for non-response follow-up is norfut. From August 11th. So, what this operation is, for folks, for household that didn't self-respond. From August 10th to today. 2020 Census. 22.3%. Self-respond. From August 10th. So, as of today, as of yesterday, 71.9% we have completed non-response follow-up, 71.9%. So, if you add the 71.9 operational non-response, where we knocked on the door and gathered the information. If we add that to the self-response, 22.3%. So, it brings a total 94.2%. 94.2%. We only need like 5.8% more to complete the 2020 Census. Three or four years ago. Although with Division of Community Development Rule Addressing. Housing unit. So, those information was shared with Bureau of Census. So, during that time, also using the 2010 data. There was 89,000-plus housing unit out there. So, the 89,000 housing unit. Were 94.2%, 92.2%. So, during this update leave operation, this where we updated the maps. So, we're at 94.2%, 5.8% more to complete the 89,000, 89,000-plus housing unit that we started out with. Within the United States, also within Arizona and New Mexico. Most of these ACO offices are like at 98, 99% complete. As of October 8th. October 8th, Fort Defiance Agencies at 25.8%. Shinley at 17.8%. Although Western at 21.1%. Eastern at 23.9%. Although the Northern at 22.1%. These are housing units that self-respond. Although they're taking the census information for people that didn't self-respond. There's 38 tracks, census tracks, within Navajo Nation, 38 census tracks. Although the one that is doing quite well is Tonanistazee, they're at 34%. Remember, we're at, a nation as a whole, 38 tracks is at 23, 22.3%. But Tonanistazee is at 34%. When you look at Tonanistazee, now they're doing, they've been doing a lot of campaigning. Although when you look at Tonanistism, now they're doing, they've been doing a lot of campaigning. Although the next one, Sanders and Leighton. Now that's the thirty-two point five. Although Wind Rocket, thirty, thirty point nine percent. Although Delcon, Tisto, White Cones. And then the West, they're at twenty-eight percent. So there's a lot of tracks that are doing pretty well within Navajo Nation. This is the very first time that we're doing self-response, ever since we started Census. Although within this week, we're still at those Navajo shopping centers. Today, we're at. Although this town, we're at Tubus City Shopping Center. Thursday, we're at Shinley. Friday, it's Shiprock. Although Penon, Navajo Shopping Center parking lot. Next week, hopefully, this week, early next week, we should be closing out the operation. All the way from office at the President, Vice President, all those speakers, office legislative branch, executive branch. Also, gaming enterprise have been a big help to us. All these mobile questionnaire system. We had these at the Twin Arrows. Although other enterprises that helped us. Although originally from White Room, Slaggett Two Chapter. Thank you.
Also, although I. Also, although. So a lot of my upbringing shaped me for who I am today. Also, we're acknowledging and implementing the reopening of our worksite safety guidelines. We're following CDC guidelines on any building exposures. Understanding the COVID leave, telecommuting and flexible work schedule policies and procedures. Also, a deep part of building our norms is embracing technology. So, you know, we've got to embrace technology and creating a new schedule. That's a new norm. And we've got to leave early to work and get everything situated. And then using the window of an opportunity. Yeah, it's negative, but I like to change it back to positive and more of looking at it as an opportunity to think, to plan, to live and reflect, not only on yourself, but as your program, your work area, and then your home. Although now, the Navajo Nation employees, from since the pandemic started to October this month, we are looking at a total of four thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine employees with a resignation and some individuals that retired, a total of one hundred and seventy-three, which gave us four thousand six hundred and fifty-six. And then following that, we did some new hires, some temporary employees, full-time. So those are the ones, all totaled up to four thousand eight hundred and eighty Navajo Nation employees. With that, we have a number of employees that are working back at the work site and with a number of employees that are still telecommuting. We do have a telecommuting agreement in place, so that is up to the individual employee and with the agreement with the employees, our immediate supervisor. We did have what is called special duty pay. Also, I. So I'm just letting you all know that there is a deadline. Controller, matter controller. The special duty pay, the request is going to end on October twenty-third. And the other piece that I want to share at the bottom of the PowerPoint is our DHR guide for our Navajo Nation employees. Earlier, I indicate I am the Division Director of Human Resources. And when you click on that, it takes you to our human resources. It tells you about our Division of Human Resources, the Department of Personnel Management. You want to have access to the leave policies, family medical leave procedures, special duty procedures, our office background investigation, our Navajo Occupational Safety Health Administration, Navajo Office Vital Records. Although now, the lessons learned, the virus is serious and there's still no vaccine. It limited us from shaking hands, visiting with one another, traveling to other locations, family events and celebration. And it taught us to be self-aware of our surroundings, taking precautionary measures and constantly clean our home and our office areas and abiding by our public health orders, executive orders. We're continuing the curfews and that starts Friday. For the remainder of the month, we are going to continue our fifty-six hour curfew. Although now, stop thinking organized. Let's start reflecting and reevaluating yourself, myself, ourself. Also, the importance of you. So embracing nature is really important, building your foundation. Also empowering yourself. So I put this together, the more you know about yourself, the better you will be at adapting to changes in life. We all were not prepared for this pandemic. And we know it's going to be here, we don't know how long, we're waiting on the vaccine. Although now, the. Make sure your family has enough food. Although that. Also, I. Again, I want to thank all the individuals that are abiding by the lockdowns, the public health orders that are coming up. And avoid guests and celebration in your home. Avoid some unnecessary travel. Also, the XCLC COVID-19 resources. If you click on this as well, it'll take you to their resource page. And with their resource page, it has the COVID-19 resources, the flu vaccine. And the essential shopping tips. Also, I. You have to understand what hardship is. Tell your elderly. Also, I. DA Hardship Assistant. Application. I. Oh, you go, there's too much red tape. Also. Although. Also. 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 Dan'apoh'oz'osin'la. Ok'oh'oshi ladina neshi'oo'iyu ha'de da'as'ido'nda'has'na'na, i'ch'eh'ha shik edo shitna'na. Ha'la'ah kod'oh eh chashin tsago'apens'toy it'ah eh kod'oh in'ash'wo. In'eneh il'wo'aa'ani l'tch'ho. Aro chashin tsago eh kua'edi na'mesh'nlini gi'ah'ani. O'oyu'go eh, um, n'te'il'kes. O'iyu'go n'te'il'kes, o'oyu'go na'anthin'it'eh. Ok'da'eta'eta'hol'ya shik edo shitna'na. Take care of yourself. If you look at a lot of these changing from negative, ma- make it to positive. It's not hard. Use it as this is a time for an opportunity, for growth, for change, to voice. I mean, everybody has their opinion. We're not gonna, everybody's not gonna agree with one another. But at the end of the day, we are still Navajo people, ati den'ani'tla. Eh'eh'ho't'oh'ani'ta. Aro ahani'ahl'ani'ha'oh'la thohno'do hin'ant'chin'ahl'ah'ant'end. We have different upbringings, we have different teachings from our elders, we all have different beliefs. But we're still Navajo, ati den'ani'tla. Eh she'be, um, n'sht'eh'to le shik edo shitna'na yeegu ta'ta'hol'ya do. Ta'al'hit'innosin, iyo'ta'al'hin'oh'neh. Nas'te do'eh'osin da'shik edo shitna'na. K'un'tsago eh hananasi'ed'oh le, ka'al'she'ita'ch'ch'il. I'ch'eh'ha'ma'ad'oh'se, i'ch'eh'ha'shik'eh.
Ya'at'eh nan Dr. Fowler kua'ea' i'ch'eh'ha'nan'ani n'te'iki. Eh'ba'ha'hanosin do, kua'ani hin'at'ani president nas'ed'oh, vice president wiser. M'k'et'ot'oh, Mr. Mitchell kua'edi senses, um, wali'eni do. Um, ben'hit'ha'nan'ch'oh, kua'ea'ta'isumi his'ah'shin kua'ade. Ad'ya'ethni'ah'do kua'ea' i'ch'eh'ha'nan'ke'di'ni do, nan she'eh Dr. Jill Derns'ch'eh'do. Um, Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. It's East Bah'ha'Yan'Jeh kua'edi g'den'sh'ii do. Di'je'eh kua'ani i'ch'eh'ha'nan'ke'di'ni do, nan ta'is'om'ats'and'ido. Kua'ea' is eh in'gon'bad'nishi do, is eh na'k'ume'ka'ha'ta'bad'ani. Do EMS workers do, our colleague kua'edi, um, de'koshun'sha'gi nas'ta. Um, nas'te't'ada ati kua'edi. Na'kin'inko eh kua'adi. Um, do, do net'eh'ho'neh, da do chashin'ing'ah'ho't'oh'ni'li'de. Um, kua'edi hin'at'ani, kua'edi curfew nad'idi'ni do. Kua'edi daily, um, daily curries so kua'edi, um, teams at'so'el'ya, laha'ol'ya. Eh'ad, um, nine P M. do five P M. de'ed'oh'le, so kua'edi. Eh she'kua'edi sa'and'ail'nishigi, um, so'ta'to, um, chinko ben'ya'um, chi'yan'tha'hol'ning'gi don'ah'ab'i'ga'ta. Ben'ya she'kua'um, ba'inhans'oda'keso, inhans'ode'keso'ed'oh. Kua'edi, um, ba'ya'di'ltch'le'ed'oh, ok'oh. Eh'eh'ya'ad'ot'ana'ad'oh'ano'ani'ya'ha'da ben'ya'eh'ho't'ah, um, ho't'adi. Um, curfew hours in daily, in da'um, inhans'ode'keso'ed'ets'endo. Um, di ati de'koshun'sha'nas'te't'ada, kua'edi de'gon'ades'k'at'ni di. Kua'edi New Mexico do, nde'yu'tad'eh. Um, ok'eh'go eh ben'na'ha'adi, m'ch'ch'ito'n his'eh'oh, but that's far on de'ke'tat'ni ati. Um, so i'ch'eh'ha, thank you for those that are listening, I just want to, um, do the remainder of the presentation in English. Just want to thank everyone for being on the call again this afternoon and I was just addressing the continuation of the pandemic and also the issues of additional public health orders from the Health Command Operations Center. To date, we're still, um, encountering various clusters across the Navajo Nation, so please be, um, vigilant and still continue to, um, do preventive measures. A lot of the drivers of these clusters are related to gatherings and people going off the reservation and coming back. So we would just want to continue to emphasize that, um, we are able to control and not increase the spread of, um, COVID nineteen as we are wearing masks, um, outdoors in the public. Also, as a reminder that we should feel comfortable wearing a face mask around others, um, that come to our house. If you do end up in a social gathering situation, uh, we discourage that, but if you do, it's okay to ask your relatives and your friends to wear a mask if they come into your home or your house, and if you are outdoors, make sure people are, um, standing six feet from each other and not sharing as much food as possible. And that could be the only way to avoid a lot of these, um, situations around gatherings. Also, if you work off the Navajo Nation, and just be careful because, um, we know that it's not that the virus is, um, here, it's everywhere. Wherever you go, if you don't take your precautions, if you attend other gatherings somewhere else, or you come from a hotspot area, or you do go to those areas and you come back. As a general rule, I'll go over some more information, um, Dr. Fowler. Did a good job, um, with some of this information already, so I'll skim through them very quickly, but I just want to always remind everyone to take their regular precautions, um, as a reminder because the rest of October will be continuing to emphasize, um, kind of, um, hunkering down and staying at home, so. Um, the regular messages that we often do and what Dr. Fauci has continued to say is wear a mask, a face mask, wear it right, wear it the way it's supposed to. Make sure it covers your entire nose and your mouth. And making sure that you are able to clean it properly. You dispose of it every day, you don't wear it more than once, um, in, in the next day or two or three days. So those are just, um, careful reminders that masks need to be properly cleaned and used as well. Also, the six feet social distancing, that can occur at any time. I think on Navajo, um, that this month, as we continue to do, um, a safer and at-home order in the future, uh, but Navajo is the safest place you can be. Our grocery stores, our gas stations are doing a very good job enforcing these, uh, measures. So, once you go off the Navajo Nation and you begin to, um, go into stores, um, it might not be the case. Some people might not really wear a mask. Some people might, may not really social distance, so, um, if you're wanting to go off of town, I think here, the safest place here is on Navajo. Contribute to our economy, to our grocery stores. And also, um, ensure that you, uh, that the stores will do so- some sort of enforcement as well. Another thing is to continue to wash your hands with soap and water. Everyone has, um, access to bar soap, regular soap. Um, and hand sanitizers are now easily accessible, so always keep one in your, in your purse or your bag, in your vehicle. And also, um, make sure when you do cut, get home, or when you're back at work after lunch, or other places that you continue to wash your hands for twenty seconds and wash your hand properly. Um, although, ah ts'f'ego'do'ana'leti, I guess is how you word it. Uh, making sure that you, um, properly wash between your fingers, around your hands, around washing your thumbs, on your palms, um, your lower wrist. And once you wash all of those very areas that we don't think about, it will take twenty seconds. And so, and then cleaning and disinfecting high-touch surface areas wherever you're at as well. It could be at your computer. You should have, um, water or bleach solution, it, um, which is easily accessible now, um, to maintain that in your office, clean a couple hours, um, on your desktop every day, your, the handlebars at work. And then also, your vehicle and at home. Um, there are some common areas, our phones as well, as, as a matter of fact, we always carry our phones around, but never did we really think we wanted to clean them, but it's now very important that we clean them very often as well. And then also traveling outside the Navajo Nation, so I kinda went over that as well and just think about the risk of going off the Navajo Nation. Um, wherever you're going, is it considered a hotspot? And then usually people ask us, is a hot, how do you know it's a hotspot or not? So usually you, the state, um, database has some resources on cities or counties or distant news in general that they're saying that there are spikes in this, um, in New Mexico now. I think a couple last week, there was a record-breaking number, even though, um, the positivity rate, meaning the number of people testing positive are low, but the numbers are still very high. Also in Utah, they, um, do surveillance and certain counties, um, are usually darker, so just be mindful, there are areas and we can all educate ourselves to see where we're going, if, if it's important. But maintaining your preventive measures while you're traveling is important, but always think about this when you're traveling, is that if you are traveling with people that are high-risk or have health issues, or either when you do get home, you will, um, there are other people that do have health conditions that you have to consider. So when you come home, are you willing to quarantine for fourteen days after your trip? I mean, those are what we're dealing with right now because there are individuals that have gone off the Navajo Nation. And they might not, it could be an accident or they don't know, or either they weren't wearing a mask, or they're, they're, they're not washing their hand. So, the disease is spread by just typically what we've been recommending. If you don't take those precautions everywhere you go, when you go to the grocery store, when you shop, when you go to the mall, when you go to these out, um, outer areas or border town areas, you're putting yourself at more risk if you're not taking these preventive measures, and if you do go, continue to wear your mask and wash your hands, so that way you are not putting, um, yourself and others at risk, but also back to the question, is it worth the risk of, um, preparing for these type of, uh, this disease or other sorts of illnesses that we don't want to think about? So, just once again, I'm just reiterating. Um, if you can get your groceries at home, if you can get your gas nearby, if that's all you need, if you need a new pair of shoes or a shirt or something else, those can probably wait because they're not really essential. And buying a video game or things like that, I think that we can all question our, um, patience in this pandemic, so. Um, ahshi pat'eni gato, hat'ain'izneh os'ide'ya, so really it's um, our own perseverance and our ability to do those considerations as well. Also, when when you want to, when you are questioning yourself, if you want to be around others as well, um, if someone had COVID nineteen, and this is always, um, some oh questions, or some may ponder if this is, um, a question that family members might have, um, that had tested positive. So now you're seeing a lot more cases over time on the Navajo Nation, so you do have people that are hopefully staying home and that have tested positive, but they should be quarantining at home if they're positive. So do not go to the grocery store, do not be out in public, so things like that um, with a positive person should, should safely recover. And in order to be around others, um, that either have been, they have tested positive, but they have symptoms. So at least ten days since, since the symptoms first appeared. So ten days this person needs to be at home. That doesn't mean that this person should be checking their mail, hopefully they can find others to help. Also, that twenty-four hours since last fever without use of fever-reducing medication has occurred, so no Tylenol or other kind of Ibuprofen for at least twenty-four hours, and that symptoms such as fever, body aches have disappeared as well. So then, this is a great timeline that this person can be around others. But if the person has no symptoms, is often referred to as asymptomatic, so. Uh, meaning that these are individuals that will not have a fever, will not have body aches, might have a slight headache. But, um, they might have really mild to very low symptoms, and these are often seen in younger individuals. Um, we do have individuals that are testing positive, that are under ten years old on the Navajo Nation and under nineteen, I think we're probably over a thousand individuals. I have not seen, I have not calculated the latest numbers, but you're probably looking at around, um, close to fifteen hundred individuals that, um, that are young and with very, no, with varying symptoms to none. So these individuals should have wait until ten days have passed since test and also, um, so they should wait and they should be at home and not be around others. And they continue to have no symptoms. If you are one of these individuals and you can't isolate at home, um, the best thing to do is call your health provider and see if you can get referred to the Tinley Community Center. The isolation has been operating since last Tuesday, so, um, if you feel like you need to, um, be somewhere where there is medical attention. Um, and also you will be, uh, monitored and provide meals and also making sure that, um, you do safely recover, so, um, so that way you protect yourself, um. In, in this situation, you don't want to infect your families or your friends. And you might not, um, have the process, you might not have a separate restroom at home. You might not have a nurse come by and see you every day. You might not have enough food for fourteen days that, um, that might help you. And you might not have individuals to assist in taking care of you, and if you don't have some of those, I hope that you can work with your health provider or some of the individuals that at these health facilities are aware that you can get referred through the public health nurse or the C H Rs. or either um, people, if you have tested and you, you visit it with a health provider. So know that there is a place out there in, in Tinley that we can work on arrangements for transportation, so you get there safely. And that you safely recover, so you're in isolation for the duration of um, fourteen days, um, between ten to fourteen days until you're, you are, you are considered recovered, and then you can go home. So I think that's the way to address this pandemic, is if there are individuals that are positive and you can't do this safely, we're experiencing clusters because maybe there isn't a place to go, so just know um, the isolation kits are probably not appropriate that we used through the summer, um, those were tents, tent and camping kits that we had. And at this point, those are not probably appropriate as we are experiencing low temperatures in the high elevation areas such as Winter Rock and other areas, so going to a place like the Tinley Community Center would be the best, um, solution for individuals needing to isolate. And then if you are a COVID nineteen, um, if you are at risk of quarantining or, or isolating quarantining as well, like if you've been near a close contact individual as well. Um, if you've been near a close, um, contact and you're not positive yet, but you're monitoring. We are working on arrangements for, in the Tinley area as well to look at this type of facility for people that are just wanting to monitor their symptoms, but don't have a place to go as well. So if you are in close contact with someone, it's usually within six feet of distance and fifty minutes are long, are longer. So when an exposure does happen, those contact tracers will ask all those very important questions. Once again, everyone just continue to avoid large, um, gatherings as well. Um, right now, the general public health order is related to by persons or less. And so continue to clean and disinfect, um, discourage hand-shaking, sharing food, celebrate by phone or video call as well. And then at work, continue to safely practice, um, preventive measures, stay home when you are sick, so. Um, that's the best bet if you don't know if there's COVID or not, but if you just feel like it's an allergy or you could have a different flu or a stomach flu. I mean, all of this should lead to just making sure you stay at home, so when you're when you know that, and listen, when you know that these symptoms are not normal, listen to your body. If you've, or you're having headaches and you're starting to feel fevers, um, stay at home because we don't know at this point. Um, we don't know if it's a flu, we don't know if it's continuing allergies or COVID, so it's always a reminder, just stay home and if you come to work, you you are putting yourself, um, and, or others at risk, and we don't want that. And also that you should just safely recover at home before you go back to work. Monitor your health, like I mentioned. Wear, um, cloth-based coverings all the time and practice social distancing. Cover your cloths, avoid sharing objects and equipment, and if you do, do that at work because you might have, um, shared space at work, make sure that individuals clean up after themselves when they use a keyboard or a mouse or other items, or if they use a conference room, those are suggested practices. Um, and that should also be the case, um, at every other businesses as well, and disinfect, and also avoid having visitors at the workplace if you can do your, um, in, your business with them through a phone, um, or your correspondence with an email or phone. And avoiding as much in-person unless if you have to, and make sure you initiate, um, safety protocols. Also, for Halloween during the pandemic, we will continue to provide suggestive recommendations on how to celebrate Halloween at home with your family. Do a virtual contest, um, at, uh, in the community, virtual Halloween contest, game nights, Zoom parties, scary movie nights, spooky pic, pictures in-home, or trick-or-treating. Um, be creative by doing a spooky, um, cook-off, dinner theater, where people dress up, scavenger hunt house in your own, um, house or outside, Halloween karaoke, Halloween pi, piñata. All of those are things that we are, we can often do and change the way we celebrate Halloween, so. I encourage everyone to look at these suggestions, and also to continue to practice social distancing and, um, washing your hand and wearing a mask as well, so I just want to thank everyone, and have a safe weekend and day, and prepare, and now I'm gonna, um, introduce Mr. Dayti Willie with, um, Division of Economic Development.
Agola, ihe ha, uh, ntsago dole, Dr. Jim, uh, ncha, ncha, nchan, nchan neinzi iki, arro eh ya, yat eh onotsho shik eh, uh, shidhiya zene. Uh, shee ya di, division Economic Development, selin, division director, selin. Arro eh ya, do ne edh chapa ha, enshonot chachini, eh, basheschin, ashin he edh hasa chiro kiya, oni edh hasanale. Uh, arro eh ya, ihe ha ntsago. Thank you very much for, uh, listening in today with us. Uh, I, I am your last presenter for the Town Hall today. Uh, as President mentioned, please, um, tune in again on Thursday at six o'clock, uh, regarding important updates for the Navajo Nation. Uh, what I'll be going through is, um, updates regarding our CARES funds for the Division of Economic Development. Uh, where we are at, within our division, there has been an allotment made in the amount of sixty million dollars for economic relief for businesses, and also for Navajo artisans. Up to this point, our division has been, uh, working endlessly to provide that needed support to our businesses and to our artisans. Uh, do eh ya, as far as last week, um, the update that I have for you, uh, as of October eighth, includes, um, some relief that went out from that sixty million for, um, direct assistance to our applicants. As you can see, uh, we had about a thousand eight hundred and twenty-three applicants that have been, uh, applied for the program. Of those, um, applicants there, there has been an offer as well as a funding that happened to seven hundred and ninety-three of those applicants, so that means five million, five point eight million dollars estimated has been sent out for, um, relief to artisans and to businesses. And of that amount, uh, six hundred and twenty-eight of those have been artisans, and the amount of three million dollars, and a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-five of those are businesses in the amount of two point seven million. Uh, keep in mind, this is as of last Friday. Uh, I do have some more updates as far as the, uh, expenditure plan, uh, lays out for this coming week. Uh, we have a total of a thousand thirty applicants still finalizing their application. Maybe they need to submit more information to us, and that varies at, uh, ten point six million dollars in requests that are still pending for dispersment, um, they just have to finish their applications. Of the seven hundred and ninety-three applicants, we have, um, identified that their, their agency as well as their home location. So of those applicants, we have a hundred and thirteen within the Eastern Agency. Of that hundred and thirteen, eighty-seven of those are artists, and twenty-six are businesses. For Defiance Agency has a total of a hundred and fifty-six, with, um, a hundred and twenty-one artists, and thirty-five businesses have received assistance. Our Central Agency, uh, around eighty-three total. Of that eighty-three, sixty-eight are artists, and fifteen are businesses. Western Agency is at a hundred and twenty-nine, with a total of ninety-seven artists and thirty-two businesses. Northern Agency averages at sixty-seven, with forty-eight artists and nineteen businesses. The off-reservation assistance is at two hundred and forty-five, meaning that two hundred and seven have gone to artists, and thirty-eight have gone to businesses. So as you can see here, our off-reservation applicants um, are at a higher number as compared to our on-reservation agencies. One of the concluding factors is that the individuals have access to internet, access to wifi, have better technical capabilities as compared to those applicants on the reservation. So as we move forward, um, we do offer technical support to individuals who need help. Uh, I know many individuals have expressed that our phone lines have been tied up, which is true, um, but we, um, uh, do get around to answering everyone's phone call in a timely manner. Uh, we also have the website, which is the most important, uh, instrument that we've been using to communicate to individuals who are applying for the program. And that website is navauconomy.org. I just would like to remind everybody that we do and are following all CDC requirements as far as the, um, safety for staff, and reminding individuals that using the website is a lot faster as compared to going through a paper application, which we do have at all of our office locations. As you can see here, if you go to the website, navauconomy.org, you're able to see the portal for application. The part one, necessary to certify yourself as an artist, a performing artist, as a business on the Navajo Nation, arro eh ya. Our part two, which is the actual CARES Act application itself, to apply for the funds. Now, on our part one process, you must fill out the questions identified, that identifies you as a business through the Division of Economic Development. You just fill out the questionnaire that asks us questions as far as, what kind of business are you? Majority of our individuals here are sole proprietor, or what we call sole owners. So you own your business, whether you are an artist, or you are an entrepreneur. And then you fill out this series of questions necessary to register with the Navajo Nation. Part two is the CARES Fund application. Before you can get to this point, please be mindful that you must complete the part one process before we can finalize your application for the part two. Once we get that complete, we move on to part two. You get issued a number, and you register with our portal to apply for the program. So in this case here, when you reach this point, you're gonna register your account with us so that you can receive, uh, the application. You will more than likely go through the same process with the hardship funds through the Navajo Nation. For the business and artisan relief that you see on the screen, you must have an email, create your password, and create your account to apply for the portal. Under the, uh, the controller's office that is managed, has been our central point of communication. Uh, we call this portal, um, the nepet besa pahanet, the, the story of the people's money that has been allocated from the, um, CARES funding to the Navajo Nation. So as we move forward, we do offer support, we do offer assistance to individuals needing information from us. Our website is, um, the key point for communication, our social media, our phone number, nine two eight eight seven one six five four four. And all of our offices located throughout the Navajo Nation. So that was just a brief summary update on our current CARES funds related to the Division of Economic Development. E da kuren chahasti do, ihe ha ntsago shik eh, shidhiya zene. Thank you very much, please continue to stay safe, as communicated by our president, our vice president, our health officials, and all of our Navajo Nation employee, government officials, and by Haydenson, I am thankful, and I appreciate each one of you. And, um, we look forward to offering more assistance as we move forward through these next couple of months for the expenditure program offered by the Division of Economic Development, so. Ihe ha, and we look forward to seeing you again on Thursday at six PM for our next Town Hall update. Have a good day.